Please stand for the flag to lead. Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and justice for all. Please stay for a moment. Thank you. There are some there to go. Excuse me. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from citizens, and there is time for the public comment prior to the action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home districts and ensure our meeting is reasonable and length. We have more information and we can summarize three minutes. Please provide and leave behind materials for board's review. Moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have any questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Have a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
If aye, I can't sleep.
You gotta stay awake this time. Okay, report, we don't have the school days. Do we have a school days on here?
I do not see her.
I don't either, okay. Then we'll move right on. Donations.
Okay, I have several to report. Winchester Meadows donated a medal to the shop class of the high school. Roger and Judy Rooney donated $200 to the fourth grade field trips and the barbecue end of the year event. Sperryville Barber Shop donated $50 to the class of 2024 senior trip. Jimmy Swindler had three donations. The first one is $50 to the senior class. The second one is $200 to the class of 2025. And the third donation is $175 to the class of 2027.
Have a motion to adopt the minutes from October 10.
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The, I, I.
I have a question about the bills.
Okay.
I was just wondering, in the top of them, there was lists of, there was a list that included the fun in the sun, the pathways, the academy. My understanding is that it's gonna be reimbursed from a grant?
Correct.
So, so we don't need to worry about those negative?
That's right. In our, you'll see those in the December appropriations that go to the supervisors to reconcile those grants.
They all come back together in January.
Correct. Okay.
It is a big number.
It is a big number.
The key is looking at the bottom numbers, seeing that we're at 34%.
Yeah, I think those are, those are path grants.
Some are. Some are private donations. There's three different grants that are paid for pieces of those.
Okay.
And I think in our December appropriations that we sent to the county, it's about $459,000 in grants we have to reconcile. So, it's quite a bit. We're the reason that triggers their 1% for a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. May I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from the superintendent, 4.1.
All right, we have quite a few items tonight, some exciting stuff. First, I'm going to invite Kathy Zare Rhodes, our school psychologist, to the podium to talk about bullying prevention month.
And you know, this is very familiar to you all, and I just wanted to say, I've been doing this so many years, and I really appreciate your interest and support of this program. Okay, there it is. So, thank you for this opportunity again to share what we've been doing at the schools this last month. So, one of the things that we do for October bullying prevention month is supply both schools with morning announcements that have themes of kindness and respect, bullying awareness, how to be a supportive friend, and social isolation. Now, I'll talk about the social isolation a little bit, because that's one of my focuses this year. So, one of the things we did at the elementary school was read The Little Bully by Beth Bracken over the announcements. And I provided links to read love books for the teachers to use with their students on bullying prevention themes. Once again, we held a spirit week, October 9 through 13, and the students in middle school came up with the topics this time. So, they chose backwards day, turn your back on bullying, western wear day, wrangle up bullying, crazy socks day, it's okay to be different, and camo day, we all blend together. That was a new one. So, to take a closer look at social isolation, we continued our Start With Hello program, but we moved it from September into October, so it's part of the month of bullying prevention month. So during the week of October 16 through 20, we participated in the Start With Hello week by focusing on creating a culture of inclusion and committedness, building a sense of belonging among the students. And the three steps you can see there include, first, recognizing students who might be alone or are socially isolated, and then think about what you can do to include them in your activities, and then third, break the ice and start a conversation. So one of the activities we tried this year was providing the high school students with these conversation starters. They're called tabletop cards, and we put them in the lunch tables, just to get students to think about different topics and converse with each other. So for example, one of them was if you can invite someone from the past, present, or future to eat lunch with you, who would be? What is the simplest thing somebody can do to cheer you up when you're feeling down? Those types of things. And at the elementary school, we, I did the same thing last year. We gave students and staff colored wristbands, and so when they were moving on the building and they saw somebody with the same color, they would greet them and say hello. And then I added two new things this year. So one of those, you can see on the left, it's a note, sorry, this echoes, there's a note, so students, so teachers can write notes to particular students to say that you're, we've noticed that you're being a good friend to others. So we called those upstanding notes. And then the other was gratitude letters. So this one kind of exploded. I was at a conference that day that we did these. I came back to my office and to my mailbox, and it was full of 300 gratitude notes. So the students at the elementary school really outdid themselves. So they wrote gratitude letters to classroom teachers, exploratory teachers, school counselors, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, ELL teachers, coaches, admin, special ed staff, GT, SRO, other support staff, I mean, everybody was covered. So I just picked out a few of them. This one says, Mr. Strew, I am grateful for your amazing cooking. I love your cornbread so much. Thank you for cooking for us.
Good cornbread.
And Mrs. Pond, I'm grateful for everything that you do. Thank you. And I have a few more on the next page. Oh, yeah, I didn't mention, so the elementary school, we asked some affiliates out during exploratory classes. At the high school, we put a basket in the office so students could come and pick up a letter to, again. Mrs. Way, I'm grateful for Mrs. Way. Thank you so much for everything. You were one of the best teachers. I like Jimmy Deals, the bus driver one. I'm grateful for, thank you for driving me from home and in school. You are very nice. Just be a few more. Cafeteria, Mrs. Frye, I'm grateful for all of the good food that you make us and all of the work that you put in for us. Mrs. Grady, she helps me do art. I thank you always for always being here for us. And then lastly, sixth grade, Mrs. Jarrett, I'm grateful for you because you make math fun. You're also very helpful. That's why you are the best. So yeah, some of them are very personal, very touching. So I think we'll have to do that one again. Unity Day, we celebrated Unity Day on October 18. Students and staff were encouraged to wear orange to show support for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And then this year, I added a little twist to the poster contest. I asked the students to work together with partners, and we had over 50 submitted, which is more than ever before. So that certainly struck a chord with students. And the best part is, we asked them to vote on their favorites, which means that all these students had to go around and look at all the posters and read all the messages. So that had an extra benefit there. So some of the, I won't read all these, but the one in the middle, I thought was really interesting. Somebody put a lot of thought into this, and they wrote different ways of approaching a bullying situation. The last part says, control yourself, don't make things worse, never use violence. And then there are other ones about helping somebody. And the one on the right, I like, you can't read it because it's really dark purple, but it looks black on this, on this screen, but the message on the bottom of that one says, when you grow up, bullying at school will be your biggest regret.
Yeah.
It's not, say something. And then I have a few more to show you. I like the one, good guys don't bully, and it shows a little superhero print, I can't tell. And then the next page shows a few more. Stop bullying, it will change the world. And I like the message on the second one, this is under the sea, and if you look at the detail, it's amazing, this shipwreck in there, every kind of sea creature. And the message is, bullying is like throwing a stone in the ocean. You never know how deep it will go. And I had to put a few more up here on the screen. So and this one I like because they have some, on the right, they have some messages, and then they actually put a sign from, partition on the, petition on the right, with 28 people signing it. So they got a lot of support on that one, so. All right, and so we also gave out bookmarks with the bullying prevention theme to the high school and elementary school. And then, as always, I share resources to both schools with a number of videos, music videos, or humorous videos, or videos made by kids on the theme of kindness and bullying prevention, and also some other activities like coloring pages and things like that. And I always like to end with pride clubs at the high school because their approach is throughout the whole year. So every month, they meet with their clubs and with a purpose of belonging to a positive club, and that's one way of making sure everyone's included. So we have a lot of choices this year. I just thought I'd highlight a few of them because some of these are very creative. One is Agri Touring, and so this group will visit various farms around the county. Another one is All Things French, Bake and Take Club, where they can bake items and learn to cook in cast iron pots like the colonial settlers used. Historic Film Club, and there's some gaming clubs, pickleball, puzzle and board games. And this was interesting, Amateur Radio and Communications Club, Arts and Crafts, and Competitive Coin Hall Club. Yeah, you name it, all these interests are represented, so I think it's gonna be a fun year for those students. And that's all I have to say. Thanks again.
Any questions from the board members?
Is there anything else that we can do to help you to be active with this mission?
I'll have to think about that.
I think it's a topic that we.
Our high school is doing strong and well. And the room of academics, our teachers are administering benchmark assessments to gauge student learning from the past 14 weeks of school, so that their students can be known by name and need, and most importantly, so that they can find to the instructional approaches that we will make towards the end of the term, towards the end of the week. Additionally, at the end of the semester, I'm pleased to announce special honors that we will celebrate in January for our students. Rapid County High School is going to receive three levels of achievement awards to be presented to students. These three levels are Panther Scholars. These are for students who achieve a grade point average of 3.0 to 3.5. The principals list, these will be students that achieve a grade point average of 3.5 to 3.75. And the superintendent's list, these are students that achieve a grade point average for the semester of 3.75 to 4.0. This is something I'm excited to introduce to our school, so that we can celebrate the academics and encourage students to strive to recognize their accomplishments. And for those students that don't make one of those three honors, hopefully they're inspired by what we plan on presenting in January. We'll do it on the Wednesday after the Lord of the King holiday as a small assembly. Tonight, I also want to spotlight two other areas, excuse me, athletics. We all know that our cross-country team went to Salem, Virginia, and they performed marvelously. Our students did not place, but think about it, we were the only high school in the Commonwealth of Virginia to have sent a boys' and a girls' team in class one, two, three, or four. And the only other one was James Robinson High School in class six. We're really proud of our cross-country team, they've done extremely well. For the second straight year, our volleyball team made it to the state quarterfinals. They fell a little bit short at the other school in Warsaw, I won't say their name because we know who they are, that play down there. But our girls, they fought valiantly. My son and I, we were able to drive down and see the girls, and they battled back after being down two sets. They could have thrown in the towel, but they didn't, they played marvelously. Another activity that came to an end in the fall is our band. This is the first time in a while that any principal at Rapid County High School has honored the band and its achievements at the end of its marching season. There are always a concert season, but the marching season technically ends when football season ends. So at this time, I'd like to bring our director of bands for Rapid County Public Schools, Ms. Clea Page, to the front, and she has some students with her. As Ms. Page comes to the front, I just want to say that our band is a point of pride, not only for the school, but also for the community. Post-pandemic, the band has been a shining light for our students and our faculty and staff. There's a band concert coming up before the next school board meeting, so hopefully everyone on the board and in the audience will be able to attend. Without further ado, the maestro or maestress herself, Clea Page.
Hi. So I just came with a couple of notes, started down. I brought with me Mr. Elijah Low over here and Natalie Campbell. Elijah Low is our drum major for the marching season, and Natalie Campbell is one of our co-color guard captains for the season. So once I'm done here, if they wanted to say a thing or two about how the season went, I encourage it. So we began in mid-July. So they left school, they got a little bit of a break, and then they came right back at it. Color guard, though, started, actually, they started practicing in about March. So they've been working for a very long time, and you'll see soon it definitely paid off. We started band camp in mid-July from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., all the way up until the school year started, and then the second school year started. We rehearsed five days a week between three days after school and then two days during school hours. We also took a trip to Salem, Virginia, to see DCI Drum Corps International, which are professional marching bands, where they actually get paid to do a marching band. And so not only was it a cool experience to show what marching band was about to our beginners, but also too, to show them a career option for those wanting to pursue bands afterwards. We competed in four competitions, this, oh yeah, bring a card. There's layers, take your time. So we competed in four competitions and one exhibition. We placed at every competition, including Parade of Champions, which is that purple one right there. Parade of Champions is a very large competition where bands from all over the East Coast travel to JMU, and we compete, and it was an awesome experience, A, to play on the same field that the marching Royal Dukes gets to play on, but it's just a huge competition, and we were there all day. So we also placed fifth at competition for being our first time ever performing at Parade of Champions, which is very awesome. Guard placed first in three of our four competitions, which is really awesome. Our guard team is just awesome with the help of our color guard instructor, Tim Knupf, and Krista Brown. We also played at the collegiate level at Bridgewater College. We were invited, we were one of two bands invited to go play with them at their football game. And so we got there, we hung out with the band, we rehearsed with them, played in the stands with them, and then got to watch their concerts. And that was also cool to show them what marching band is like at the collegiate level. In our last competition at Powhatan High School, we placed first in every category, including general effect, music, visual, percussion, guard, and overall in class 1A. I also didn't even notice this until recently. So they, they have class 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5A, 5A being the biggest, 1A being the smaller of the bands. They also do like grand champions, so it doesn't matter what your class is, you can still place depending on how high your points were. We placed second in the division at our last competition, which is pretty exciting. And then that was it, that was the end of our season. Now, coming up on December 7th at 6:30, we have our holiday extravaganza. This features our a cappella group, our percussion ensemble, jazz band, concert band, and our new Music Honor Society, Triumph, which is student-run. So there's a lot of exciting things happening there. And also exciting news is that we, in March, will be going to Philadelphia to be playing at Temple University for their wind band festival, where they only accept 10 ensembles to do a performance, a clinic. They then get a master class from the Philadelphia Orchestra members, and we get to watch a performance in the end. So we've got some exciting things happening in the music department. Elijah, do you have anything?
First off, I'd like to say thank you for the honor of representing us at this meeting, and what I could go on is how we had a long season of hard work in Triumph, as you can see, and, you know, how all the hard work of each individual student, you know, has finally paid off, but I don't think that'd be doing justice for the person that's been working behind the scenes since practically the start of this year for this marching season, which is Ms. Page, and the wonderful team of directors behind her. So I just want to say thank you to her for making my last marching season of high school probably one of the best I've had, and also introducing you to one of the best colleges I've seen so far.
She's here for support. Okay, but yeah, that's, that's about it. That's what we've got going on in the music department, and I am very thankful for, to be invited here to talk about the bands and for your continuous support. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't bully radio. Before we conclude on the march on behalf of the high school, my wife and I had a conversation a few weekends ago, you know, and she asked me, what's one of the most special parts of being a high school principal? And you just saw it, that I have the honor every day to walk through the halls and see the connections that Elijah, Mr. Drum Major, just talked about. That's the most special part of the experience that we provide here at Rapid County Public Schools on both campuses, and having been in a number of school divisions, this is my fifth. You don't have that everywhere else. Anywhere, anybody that's been anywhere else, no, that doesn't exist everywhere else. So Elijah, thank you for sharing that about Ms. Page. And Ms. Page, how long you been the band director?
Second year.
And you got all those. My page was wanting to be on the record in the notes somewhere.
And you can see why Mr. Stewart and I have tasked her with leading our Fine Arts Academy as our Fine Arts Academy coordinator. She is truly magical. If you talk about creating magic, this woman's doing it.
That's right.
We just appreciate everything she's doing. This Dr. Band Mama is so excited. Thank you so much.
I just want to say that having the kids have the chance to be, like, there are sections with just one, like, my son is in a section, just he's the only one playing that. And just being at, like, being at Bridgewater with five other, it's just so nice that you have created the experience for them to feel the bigger world and definitely succeeded it too.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we're definitely, we're starting an awesome band culture here. We have almost the entire band in private lessons.
Yes.
Very, very exciting.
And Mr. Fuller is doing some of them, right?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have representation from Shana Dover University. We have one from the Fox School of Music in Miami. We have, if you know, Gil, what's her first name, is Gilbert? Deborah Gilbert, Deborah Gilbert. She is a world-renowned flowerist giving lessons. So yeah, with a lot of representation helping our students out, and their growth is definitely showing.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
All right, board members, the next item on the agenda is 4.2, going back on track, the solar update, so I'm going to ask Dr. Robin Bolt to come to the podium.
So it just doesn't even seem fair.
Where's your trophy?
It's not even fair. I was supposed to come before that.
Those panels are gonna be shiny, right? They're gonna be nice and shiny.
So, yes, I've been working with Secure Solar, so we had to represent if you have any questions. And he was gracious enough to come. He's actually leaving here and going to Williamsburg. You're gonna see him in Williamsburg also. So we've been back and forth. They sent one proposal, and something was right, so I questioned them, and they redid it to make it right. So we've been over this twice at least to make sure the numbers are right. So if you want to go to the first slide, that's just showing you where the panels will go on the proposal. It's only on the metal roofs.
And just at the high school.
And just at the high school. And so the metal roofs have that standing seam, so they can clip on those and not have to drill in.
Oh, okay.
So that's a positive, I see.
Yeah.
All right, so they'll only be on the metal roofs, which were installed in the year 2000. We're still responsible for any repairs to the roof. But they've conducted a visual inspection of the metal roof, and they appear to be a good candidate for solar. And of course, they're subject to structural analysis, but the gentleman who was out did go up in the attic and looked, and he thought it looked pretty good, that it was, but they would have an engineer come out and verify that. Metal roof has a life expectancy of over 50 years. We're at the 23-year mark. Solar does protect our roofs, the metal roofs, some of the, I've tried to read different data, and some suggest that it prolongs the life of the metal roof. And I don't think it's, it's some that said it didn't matter because of the, but I'm just giving that as a possible. And then, so solar, it looks cool. I mean, it's asleep appearance. And so I don't think it would be not pleasing to the eyes as bad as if you had them all over the ground, because it would go at the angle of the roof. So here's the money part. So the first year. So here's the money part. So the first year they are estimating we'll make, save $3,034. And then you can, it goes down through the years. And so I did it out by, they spelled it out by years, if you want to hit the next one. So at year 25, you have the possibility to buy the system for, it's on the next, like, $28,000 some. And then you're, you're, once you own the system, you're, you increase, like that years you would increase to, I think it's $40,000 you would make. So, I mean, it costs $28,000 to buy it, but because you own it, you will make more money on the solar.
But it's old.
It is, 25 years. And I don't, I, maybe you all will still be here on the board, but I don't think I'll be here in 25 years.
Wow.
I don't even think my living's in 25 years. But the total savings, if you went through year 35, is 1,000. Yeah, on one million, not $9,000 roughly. And if you click back to the other one, at the 25-year mark, you're at 253. And then there's an option to get out at that point and not pay to. So I'm just trying to give you the numbers so you can make an informed decision. So that's, at year 25 is when you have the option to purchase it. And that's where whoever's here at that time will be making more money, saving more money. Okay? So these are last year's bills. So what I did is I went through what we paid last year just at the high school and through all the electric bills to see how much we actually paid, to make sure the numbers all worked. So if you can click through the next one. So the solar panels will for, will produce 43.6% of our solar, which then we will, it will be, we would buy it from Secure Solar. And so that would be 39,866. And then the, the 56.4% we would buy from Rapid Electric. So we'd have two electric bills for the high school at that time. And it would be $3,000 less to do this in year one, in year one. And of course, every year it becomes cumulative, you know? Right. But the, um, problem with solar and it does decrease in, in productivity if you hit the next line. So, um, as you, you go along, they don't become as effective because they're getting older, just like, yeah.
So efficiency.
Yes. So they don't produce as much electricity. So the purchase price at year 26 is 28,460. And that's an option. It's not required. So who, the school district could buy those solar panels, own the solar panels, become responsible for that solar panels, and then the life expectancy would be another 10 years almost. So.
Is it, that's the last slide?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm, you can pull the last slide back up. So, um, I went ahead and did it, year one, we saved $3,034. Year, that last slide is where we need to be. It's all the numbers. There you go. Year 25 is 253,000. Then you buy them, but then that next 10 years is when you really see the savings. And we were responsible, I just want to reiterate, that if something happens, we have to take them off and pay to have them removed and reinstalled.
So what did, would that typically cost?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite.
What would that typically cost? You introduce yourself.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
I'm Lauren Swartzenberger and I'm with Secure Solar Futures, um, based in Stan. So at year 25, if you choose not to purchase them, then they will come off at our expense. And at 35, they would come off at your expense. I don't know what that is, but it's not very much. I mean, it's, you're just removing them off the roof.
But I think the, the question was if we had to repair the roof and they had to be removed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm, I, I didn't quite catch the question. So if there are repairs, I can't predict what the cost would be because it would depend a little bit on the area that would, they, they, they're in strings. So you could remove one or two or three panels. Or we would remove them and, and at your expense, those would be removed in the panel. The, um, roof would be repaired at your expense.
Right. What is the expense like for just a panel to remove and to replace?
Oh, well, if it's to replace.
Or not replace the panel, but let's say something happens to the roof underneath and we have to remove and put it.
Good question, and I don't know the answer to that.
It's like for you.
It wouldn't.
It's like anybody would take, would take, I mean, just knowing from our solar count, like, we'd take it. Anybody who can use a wrench.
Yeah.
15 minutes.
It's something that we could do ourselves.
No, that's a question.
If it's a PPA with us, then we would send our people to do that.
Just can't let somebody get up and do it.
Right. But you're, you're correct. They're just bolted onto a frame. So it's really a very simple removal process. It doesn't, it just.
Do you have an annual rate?
I don't.
Okay. I'll just, because.
I've, actually, we've not had to do this in 10 years, but.
It doesn't come up very often, does it? It hasn't for you yet.
The regular maintenance is, is our expense and we, we inspect them and clean them and replace the inverters if they go bad. Typically, they do have to be replaced in 15 years. That's our expense. The 25-year is essentially no expense to you for the normal operation. Standing seam roofs almost never cause problems in terms of, because as Dr. Bolt said, there's no penetration of the roof. So typically.
Yes, that's helpful. And that's a question we got at the county level previously. That's just why I'm asking to say we get the, you know, potential risk.
Sure.
But that's.
And in my, about six years of doing facilities, it hasn't been the roof, it's been the flashing that we've even had trouble with. And that's pretty normal and easy to get to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
If I could just add that one thing that comes with the system, our curricular materials for all K-12.
It wasn't, no, it wasn't on the slide. It's a separate, uh, I can bring that up.
Yeah, it was on there. So they offer a high school program with, for high schools. And then they offer an out, a K through 12 program curriculum. And they also offered internships, paid internships for students.
And this comes with it or is that additional?
No additional cost.
Right.
The curriculum comes and the access, what you're referring to is what's called throwing solar shade, which is for high school students to do research projects.
That's cool.
And, uh, they can then join other schools to do presentations, including at the national level, but mostly primarily in the state level. Um, those faculty have access to those resources, the K-12 as well. Resources for every class, K-12 class level, I should say, to utilize solar to learn the environmental, the physics at age appropriate.
Yeah, excellent. That was one of the key, um, asks of this board and, and the instructional staff as well. That you have some type of a curriculum component with it, so that's great.
We started talking about that two years ago, but, you know, three years ago. It's been a while now. But not just the cost of solar, the savings of solar, but what it's gonna do for students and their future with solar. And, and if the curriculum is appropriate for that process, it's, in my way of thinking, it's like buying a good math book. You know, you just get it done. And as you were referring to, workforce development is the, what we've been calling it, where the company that we would use to install, engineer and install the system would provide apprenticeships for a certain number of students to help install the system.
So they, they could help.
If you have students who want to do it. Sometimes we do that through a local community college, but they get paid well for the summer on a per-hour basis. And if they're, some decide they don't ever want to get into this business, but some decide that's the future. So they've been hired on.
And there is a CTE component to it. If they do it through the community college, they should get CTE credit for it.
And, right. And they get their tools purchased. And I think it's $15 an hour, as I recall. That's what we've been paying. That's a relatively small number of, I mean, they can't handle 100 students, but four, five, or six, depending on the size of the project. We're a small school. But that comes, that's, that comes with the installation, no extra charge. I think, I, it's, I, and for me, it's always important to say to you that, that primarily your only risk financially is if utility prices would go below what we use to project. What we're basing this on is 3% escalation factor for utility and 2% on our part for the solar, okay? We think 3% is conservative estimate for future utility costs, but you do need to know, you're committed to us to pay the, what we're charging for solar. And if utility would happen to go below that, you'd be paying us for the 43.5% that we're producing. Am I making that clear? I just, I just want you to know what that risk is on the financial side.
But when we look at, I mean, can you tell us some of the, the trajectory that, that you base that 3% on? Because I thought that, I thought that utility prices were increasing at a more rapid than 3% rate, considerably.
Yeah, most utilities are saying.
It's like.
10.
Yeah, maybe 5.
We've got, we have some that are already projected 10% per year for the next three years. My, the underlying point or the most important point is just to say, all of our projections, we try to be conservative and we have outperformed our projections on all of our systems that I'm aware of. So these numbers that we're providing, we try to be as conservative as possible. Your savings could be more, in other words. And to your point, if they go up 10%, your savings.
You're not gonna write on that 10%.
No, ours will stay at 2% for the life of the contract. Yeah. You know, that's the other way to say it. Your CFO, superintendent, you know what you're gonna pay for 43.5% of the electric needs of the building.
Stabilizes it.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and it's a fast-changing technology. So what if in 10 years, solar panels are twice as.
Really good question. Since we own the system, we would run the numbers and it might be to every, it might be a win-win on both sides to take the panels off and replace them with something more efficient. Most people in the industry don't believe that's gonna happen, that the technology changes are gonna be on the battery storage side. This system does not include any batteries.
Yeah, it's offed, fed into the grid.
Right. If batteries were warranted, but we would just run the analysis and it'd be your decision as to whether, a joint decision as to whether it makes sense to do that, to replace the panels with more efficient ones. System also comes with a monitoring system.
Yeah.
That you can look on your smartphones or on, and.
You could put it on the, that board and.
Exactly.
Standby, you could have it up in real time.
Exactly, in real time. You see the production at 10 o'clock in the morning and tailing off and. Cloudy snowy day, uh-oh.
But, but actually some cooler days, it's more.
Yeah, the cold doesn't affect it.
Cold, they actually produce more when it's cold. Albeit.
Great discussion, alright.
And on a cloudy, cloudy day, you'll still get about 10% production. But a cold sunny day is the best, albeit in the wintertime, you have fewer hours. Win-win.
Awesome. So what's next steps?
So we would do the structural, as Robin said, we would do the structural review, uh, to give you a certificate to say, because you want this so that any warranty left on the building is not gonna be compromised. So, but you also want to know that from a certified engineer, licensed engineer, that this can handle the extra weight. We don't think there's gonna be a problem. We almost never run into a problem. Worst-case scenario, it might be we'd have fewer panels, just downsize the system a little bit and spread them out a little bit more. If weight is a problem, we don't think it will be, but we'll certify to make sure.
And to move forward at that point, what commitment do you need?
Just an action by the board.
And that, and even after that point, they still have the ability to say, we don't.
Uh, yeah, you could withdraw from the contract. I don't, I'm not sure why you would do that. Well, I, I mean, obviously if it doesn't pass the structural review.
Right.
The contract. Well, you wouldn't have a contract until it's structurally appropriate.
Right. And then the board would approve it. So at this point, you're just looking for the.
We're looking for approval from you to proceed with the next step.
That's the engineer, right?
And it's not final approval until we know that our roof is sound.
And that's when everything gets signed and.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm just saying, I think this is the fifth solar company I've dealt with and they have been the most responsive so far.
Well, if it's a contract we're looking at to start the next step, then, um, might we, we would need a vote, is that?
Yeah, and you do have a copy of the contract and.
I've shared it with them.
Yes. And I think it's gone under legal review, correct? Have you, as your attorney.
It's under executive, yeah.
They're gonna look at it and then we'll have our lawyer look it over.
All right, so do you all need more time to review all those documents, have the attorney look at it and then?
Come back in December.
Come back in December and do an official vote?
I would have said, I would assume we'll do this in December after we've had time to look at it. I like to look at the contract and I like for the attorney to look at the contract. You definitely want your attorney to look at it.
Of course, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep. Nothing against you, but. No.
Anything like this. He doesn't take it personally.
I'm not an attorney. No, you absolutely need to do that. And, and that's actually your only expense is to have the attorney approve it or recommend approval.
How many pages is that?
Hey, how many words? That's what we go by. As we are fond of saying, there are a lot of brain cells that die during the process. Unfortunately.
That sounds good. Uh, so we'll do that. The board members will review all those documents. Um, we will proceed with making sure the attorney reviews, um, all those pieces and come back in December to vote to proceed or not. And think about any other questions you have, uh, before that time.
And if you have any more questions overnight, talk to me in Williamsburg tomorrow. I'll make a couple of coffee, we'll be there.
So read it tonight, you can get to tomorrow.
I'll put you to sleep. 4:30.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See you.
This is so exciting.
We found something that manages.
We're here. Any questions come up from anybody.
I have his phone number.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a safe trip now. Thank you. See you later. All right, take care.
All right, the next item on the reports, um, is 4.3, the PTO update. It's Michelle Stone.
Um, so I'm just gonna give you a quick overview of everything stemming from last year that would just took us to present time. Um, as most of you probably know, uh, we did the clothing cottages. We got a grant for the clothing cottages, one for here and one for the elementary school. Um, we had our grand opening last month, which I held back many tears. Um, it, it truly was, as in the article stated, blood, sweat, and tears. They were extremely happy tears. It made my heart extremely happy to not only lead this project, to be a part of something so much bigger than just the school, but have it in the community. Um, it is near and dear to my heart. I am so grateful for you all allowing us, PTO in itself, to do this. Um, they are literally full to the brim, both of them. If you have seen inside, you will know. Um, a list will be coming out on Friday with things that we do need. Um, we are in desperately need of shoes of certain sizes. So I plan on coming in tomorrow and doing a grand tally of what specifically we need. Um, I did have a standard operating procedure already drawn up. School board office has already approved it. Um, yes, my background is HR, so I'm a little technical. Um, I've already made up the donation guidelines list, which is also going to be the letter that I'm going to update. This was just a, an example. This was just a, an example for them to kind of look over and approve. So this will be the letter that I will be redoing, once a day tally of everything tomorrow and then we'll be sending it out home and on WrapNet and WrapShares to get out to the community. It's not just new clothing that we're looking for, we're looking for gently-used clothing as well, washed, very detailed in here on what we're looking for. The policy procedure on it, a lot of people are questioning that, which I ended up sending it to everybody in both schools and the school board office, just trying to get everybody an overview of how this is technically going to be ran. Anyone from community and/or the school system, including parents, can contact the high school social worker or the elementary school counselor or myself. I know that several employees have contacted me directly and said, hey, are you in the building? I can't find anybody else. Right, this is up in the parking lot, shocker there. So I have been graciously available no matter what to help students in need. And again, I just, I'm very overwhelmed and grateful that I'm able to do this for our students and for our community. So thank you all for that.
Are you, will you be able to put anything in the paper?
There, an article was in the paper.
Right, saw that, but I mean, about.
Oh, how to get.
How to get access.
Yes, so I plan on sending this to her once I have the full sheet of what we're specifically looking for as well, so that's gonna go out to her as well, so I'm hoping. One of the local ladies, I guess, has a particular area in the paper and she said anytime PTO wanted to carve out an area that we could do that, so I might send it to her. Yeah, so I might send it to her and be like, hey, can you do us a favor and just put this in the paper? Which I know she'll be one of the heavy to do. So that's the big project. The next thing, any questions on that before I continue with the next thing?
Thank you so much.
Booster fund run from last year, we are working very closely with Robin on getting bids and, as of today, grants for doing the upper pavilion on the playground area between the school board office and the elementary school. You know, we did this trade structures with the elementary school playgrounds in twenty nineteen, I believe. We did the walking path and the basketball area, maybe two years ago then, it got done last year. Last year's booster fund run money we still have in the account, which is roughly a little over twenty-three thousand dollars, is going towards a pavilion on the hill, moving, once I get approval from Hobbie, moving the volleyball net to the opposite side of the basketball court, because where we did the walkway, it's really close to that area, which really kind of narrowed it down for their playing area. So Robin has already said that we can move that to the opposite side, replacing the monkey bars that we had to take out for where the actual walking trail went through, getting a new tetherball for the tetherball pole that has been empty for years. We might actually move that over as well a little bit, because it is closer to, my liking, to the walking trail. And then, I don't know what you wanna call it, but the other piece of equipment with the two bars on it, we're gonna move that probably back too. I need to call Miss Utility to lay out the land first before any of that can happen, but my husband and I, Robin already has given permission for my husband and I to move that once Miss Utility comes out and I can grow the plants and where those are going to be moved. The pavilion itself, though, will be directly across from the basketball area, closer to the wooded area, so after the sidewalk, we're looking at sixteen by sixteen with a six-foot area between the pavilion and the walking path, so the mower can get through there and I'm hoping another six feet, that the mower can get through between the wooded area and the pavilion. We are gonna be contacting our concrete, our asphalt guy that did the walking path to see if he would pave underneath it once the pavilion actually gets set, so it actually will be paved underneath there. The grant that we are looking for will be for picnic tables to go under that for seating. We are looking at benches to go around the walking trail that will be concreted into the ground for people to sit in various areas. We are hoping, if we can get a grant big enough, to replace all of the swings, not the swing sets, just the actual swings on both the upper and lower playgrounds. We've had a lot of requests from teachers, especially the ones at the upper playground, I guess, are really falling apart and they're old, so we'd like to replace those. But the ones at the elementary school, they're, or the playground at the elementary school in the back, they're asking for more age-appropriate swings, some of them with smaller bases, not necessarily the big bases, not so high, more length to them, so the littler kids can get on. So hopefully if we get this grant, we'll be able to also afford those things as well. So fingers crossed, as soon as we get the other two bids, we've only gotten one bid so far. Once we get the other two bids and find out about the grant, hopefully we can get the ball rolling. Early next year, I'm hoping, just right before the next booster is gonna happen.
On the Hogsbill Trail in Luray, I remember when they were extending that, they did a bench campaign to have folks who wanted to have in memory of on the bench.
And we've toyed with that idea, so we're, we're, we might do some of the benches that way. If we can't get the grants, we, we did discuss that, putting that out there, like even if even companies wanted to sponsor, sponsor a bench, they could do that as well and we'd have a plaque or something on there saying that this, that this bench was donated by or in memory of, something along the lines of that. So we are, we're toying with a few, a few ideas. Certain things are gonna be more expensive than others, so.
There's also the possibility, you know, the Lions Club does a plastic collection for Trek Bank.
Oh, okay.
So you could possibly do a real drive for, for plastic.
Okay. And the Lions Club, what do you have?
Yeah, you bring, it's your number of pounds, right?
We've got eleven, we've got seven, eight, nine benches out right now, you can go look at one, it's, there's one up there right across from the, from the courthouse.
The one in the county park.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one in the park too. But look at one of those and see if that works and.
Absolutely.
If it works, you can give me a call when you're open.
I can do that, I appreciate that. So that's our, another big project that we are still currently working on. I kind of just needed to get the clothing cottage kind of done and tucked away before I worked on another big project. So that kind of took precedence to finish that over the summer and then working on this project now. So my apologies, I will take the win on that. I can only do one thing at a time. I hope that nature, it was a lot, and again, dedication and love, it was, it may be very heavy, but I can only do one thing at a time. The next big thing that we have coming up aside the booster funds from last year is the Holiday Shop is coming up, December fourth through the eighth. We will be open one late night, if you wanna bring your kids or just wanna stop by, you get some really cool things. Victoria Cooper, always outdone, outdoes herself, since I've been on the board and I've been on the board since school year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And when we started doing Holiday Shop ourselves as PTO, she has blunted out of the water and done some really great stuff, so I'm really looking forward to what she's ordered for this school year. There will be one late night that we are open, it'll either be the Wednesday or Thursday and I do apologize, I can't remember which one was said, but one of those nights, but fires should be coming out either this Friday or next Friday for that.
That's all I have to report, any questions?
Busy, busy, busy.
I know, I don't stop.
We love our PTO, thank you for taking care of our kids, I hope you guys do, it's amazing.
It's my pleasure.
Any questions?
How, how many people are coming to meetings these days for PTO?
About the same.
Sorry, we're keeping one for you.
Okay, about the same. We were, we were in the last one and the, well, the last one got canceled because my kids were, one stayed homesick, one came home sick and then I got sick, so I was like, yeah, I'm not coming out, y'all, like, I don't know what's going through this house, but I'm not, I'm not sharing it. But the last meeting, it was the board. One parent ended up showing up, like fifteen minutes late, I mean, we're like almost done.
Yeah, okay.
So we just kind of filled her in and.
How, how we can help sort of make people know that.
You change the date, you change the time, like.
It's hard.
Yeah. And I mean, this is across the board.
It's, it's not just here.
It's everywhere.
It is, I mean, it's, was at my last schools, it's been schools that I've, you know, known other friends at, I mean, it is, it's not just here, it's across the board.
Thank you, sir. Well, that is even more impressive with all these three or four do.
Yes, we, we are, we are small but mighty.
When do you meet, when are your meetings and is everybody welcome?
Anybody's welcome.
Both, both schools, high school?
Yeah, anybody's welcome. We actually, it's funny, we actually have more membership this year than we've ever had since I've been out here. And we, this is my sixth school year here. And this is the, this is the largest amount of membership we've had. So I'll take that.
You mean like Monday night?
Um, so we switched it because of the new board schedule, like I wanted to make sure that it worked out for us, obviously. Wednesdays work better for us, so it's the second Wednesday of every month.
Okay, great. Do you ever have a virtual option?
Um, we do, we had technical difficulties two meetings ago. We could not get it to log on to save our lives, we don't know why, we cannot figure it out. We probably spent fifteen minutes trying to, trying to like get it connected and we, we could not figure it out. But we usually do always have a Zoom link.
Well, it is parental engagement month, the November, so it would be great to do a little push-up for PTO and really encourage folks to see what you're doing and get involved, that's awesome.
Or, or even like the PTO page, because we really do try, now that I have one other person who can finally get on there and do stuff, I don't know why, they have the same rights as I do, but technical difficulties, again, I guess they have to download a different app, like a messenger app. The weirdest thing, I, I don't have that problem, but one other person is allowed, like, able to, not even allowed, able to finally post. So we do try to keep that as updated as much as possible.
Could have a mom's night out with pizza.
And dad.
I have a shady wine room, they're like, I don't have to work at that time. Just a thought, you know, hey, wine and, you know, refreshments, uh-huh, hens, um, yeah.
You can meet at across the, at the bar.
You can meet at my house.
Okay, we're gonna put your address out there.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Shelley.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Great group. Four point four is the Commit to Be Fit update. So Jackie Teager.
Kayla, where are you going to call?
Sorry, we're spinning things.
So behalf of the team, Kayla and I are here to present on last year. Which is, I'm having a hard time going back that far, because we're in the midst of a new year, so bear with us. So last year was Reboot and Reimagine and we were coming off COVID. Last year kind of was our normal year and it was, so we, we wanted to Reboot and reimagine, because we had some things that in our first grant cycle that we weren't able to really accomplish because of COVID, kind of putting up our own things. So on behalf of the team, this is the farmer's market picture. Some of you might be gone, but farmer's market, staff farmer's market is Thursday, one thirty to four thirty. I'm, you're in town, but you're invited, you're always invited to come to our farmer's shopping. So we take a three-pronged approach, show you your way, cafeteria, community and classroom, but with the first prong is cafeteria. So we focus on nutrition education, pictures release, say it all, we do harvest of the month. And our, our school name is on harvest, she comes with, to the school and she helps prepare samples to our kids in the cafeterias. This year, she's heading to high schools too, we focus on, on elementary. We're always trying to do nutrition education in the classroom and we had a try day Friday at RCH just, we tried that last year, that was a hit and you see a couple of our high school students there with samples for harvest of the month. And then we did after-school cooking club. Kayla helped organize that and Ms. Kim and Ms. Viviana bringing that again this year, or last year, sorry. I keep saying it up, last year. So that's part of nutrition education, the cafeteria problem. And then our locally sourced food, we increased our local food purchasing, our pop books is always a, a hit. And thank you to the PATH Foundation, they enable us to do that. And we did something new last year, we, right? No, yes, getting no tokens this year, sorry, again. So pop books, this year we took a different approach with tokens, so you come, the kids can get their market bag, but also they get a little five-dollar token this year that they can spend at the market whenever they want. So that's increased engagement, which we really like. And then, of course, Mr. Gates had a little raised bed outside the ABL at the elementary and he involves the kids in the lab and they grow their veggies and herbs, so we have a tower garden too as well and he'll start that here soon.
And they're also, we were able to harvest it and test it out into the classes at the elementary school and they loved it, like ranch, though.
Again, so staff's farmer market, it's a big, big thing for us and we've been able to sustain it and we're pretty proud of it for fall and spring, so the fall's coming up and again, I invite you, here, you see a couple of our staff members. It's really, it's electric, I can't, I have to describe it. It's just a good feeling, it's a good, good day, get a turkey this, this year too and then we'll do a market on the same day. So they go home turkey and fresh veggies and bread and other goodies that they wanna spend.
It's a good way to appreciate the staff that we have.
Yeah, for sure. Our classroom problem. So we have our ABL and our radium. And again, we have our coming through rotation there at the elementary school, we do have move and review, where you see Jeremy down there and Kayla helps with that as well, where we schedule, classes can come in, they bring content and we move and review and it's typically really good for a review before a test and we try to reinforce that with movements and anchor that to their little brains. So when they go to take their test and they're gonna do well. And our radium is up here at the high school and you guys are aware of that. And our mental wellness, you know, with COVID, we have seen a spike in just mental health and just trying to, everyone and just across the board being mentally well. So we, we kind of, we had to repivot a little bit after COVID, after coming out of that. We did a de-stress board, there's just these little, they're, you can get any kind of graphics, but we hung them up in the ABL. We also did at the high school in the, in the hallway there, put markers where you just go and color and it really was a hit. And we made a station in the ABL where they rotated and they actually could sit there for two or three minutes and just color in. And we found that kids were coming before school, Mr. Gates would be in the, in the ABL, they would come in just to like color. And Mr. Gates, I found him coloring too. And then, you know, we did, you know, positive affirmations, we increased our mindfulness, you know, pushes the classrooms and the top ones are really cool, Mr. Gates made a, he painted the wall white on the back wall of the ABL and he would invite anybody that wanted to come in during, when there's no classes, to come in and chill for five minutes, ten minutes. And he would have like videos playing, like this is this like sea, the sea turtle and like the ocean, it was just really like zen and you could come in and just kind of just hang out and stress. Teachers would come in, bring a couple of their students if they needed to, so that was really cool to see, that teachers really wanted to utilize it and then, and Mr. Gates was just doing a photo op, but pretty good. We have bean bags, you know, just trying to make your making. And then we, we, you know, always offer a class up here, nutrition and personal fitness, last year, we did a lot of cool things. We did rock climbing down there in Culpeper. He's a, yes, he's a former graduate, actually one of my previous students and he invited us down and we took our students and so that was a lot of fun, that was a nice field trip. And then, of course, we always are trying to plug in nutrition and we do fun things, make.
Asahi bowls.
Yes, thank you for the work. Asahi bowls. And our community prong, these are a lot of our challenges that we had, this one, I think these were over the summer, just activities, we try to keep our community engaged when we're not in school and Holly does a really fantastic job at that. And you see probably a lot from their faces. So when we came out of COVID, you know, we wanted to increase in-person classes, kind of yoga, you know, Miranda always has a nice following. Meditation, we offered circuit walking group, we did a Monday fun day, loving pack aerobics, trying to offer a variety of classes. And then we did in-person workshops like we normally do, but meal prep, we have these blaze pods that kind of test your reaction time, they're fun, the kids and adults like it too, strength training, that kind of thing. So we continue with that, just try to do more. So we continue with that, just try to be more robust. Now our wellness challenges, we had, um, it's made outside of play, that was, um, we go in the summer fun, it's all the collage that you saw in the beginning. Um, and then kindness, love and positivity, because we're always trying to spread that and be a light for anyone who needs it. And then we had a governor's physical activity award challenge, um, that the actual governor, uh, Mr. Stewart, is he still here?
Yes.
He requested, he brought it to our attention, but it was kind of embedded in the VDOE website. Um, and anyway, so he brought it to my attention. He's like, I want to do this for the school. And I was like, this is a great idea, thank you. So we ran with it. And, um, anyway, it was a fun challenge and those are the, uh, people at the end got the awards for, it was different levels and that was, and you know, since Mr. Stewart was there, it was a challenge.
And Mr. Pepper.
And Mr. Pepper, yes. Um, and then just additional community offerings, um, the turkey tri, which is we have a virtual one. Um, that'll start here, I guess this weekend officially starts, right? This weekend? Yeah. Yes, and you can do, it doesn't have to be a running walk, do a family, you know, whatever you'd like. But we love the engagement and love for you to participate. Um, the Blake's Pods, um, we, we, we were part of a fair, a little fair for elderly. And then they had a lot of fun with that, testing their reaction time. So that was pretty cool. Yeah, and very competitive.
Yeah.
And then we had an electronic community cookbook that we, um, Holly put out for us. And then we, we were able to attend a conference too. Um, and of course our weekly newsletter, Holly has set up, she does a fantastic job with that as well. If you're not, um, part of that, just shoot us your email and we'll put you on the list. We did that weekly on practice.
They are awesome, full of so much information.
Yes. And then this year, finally, favorite this year, this is where I am. Um, so more scratch based meals, uh, you know, with our healthy meals incentive grant that we received. We were able to onboard, um, Brian, at Balmridge, and so that's been a blessing. And, um, is, we've got a really, really good positive reviews and response with him. Um, we see him a lot in the, in the elementary school right now, but he's making his way to high school. He's only a person, but, um, it's a two-year grant, so we're excited to, to do that and, um, offer more scratch base. Um, and then we're trying to, we wanted to focus more on staff wellness as well, not that we haven't in the past, but just, um, a greater focus. We had the wellness rooms that, um, one here at the high school. We have weights and cardio machines in there that our staff can work out in. And at the elementary, we started to take one through. At the elementary, um, we have some cardio machines down there in, in the old, Kayla Rogie's old office, the counselor office. And we have three cardio machines, can you show us that?
Yeah, we have, um, three cardio machines. We have, um, a walking treadmill and, um, we have some yoga mats. And it's small space, but it's just a good place for them to go and deep and press. And, um, we've, we've made a turn to larger community events. Um, if you saw, we had a big line dancing event. Um, which we got, that's a picture right there, we got a video turnout and we've gotten a lot of requests for, for it to happen again. So stay tuned.
January.
In January. Yeah. So, um, good stuff coming. And we just appreciate you guys and your support and, um, any questions?
Oh, and you got your, um.
New booklet.
Yeah, Holly, um, did a really good job on these booklets. She puts a lot of time and effort into them. Um, and so I think each got a copy, so you can read it on your own tablet.
Who professionally does that?
Yes, Holly does fantastic with that. We, she has great work. And she couldn't be here, she was wanting to be here, but she couldn't be here, and Jeremy couldn't either. But on behalf of the team, we're here and we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your support and we'll be back next year to get your report on this year that we're already.
And I just, I had regards to, I love how PTO is doing the fun round, it's like a healthy fundraiser. And I noticed, you know, there's just a lot, especially this time of year where there's just a lot of food that isn't really healthy to eat that we have at games and at things and all it's like, and, and there isn't even like indifferent, like you can't also get an apple. Like it's just the fried Oreo or whatever. It's, I'm, I'm wondering if you've, I don't know how to, I know that it can be fun to have fried foods. There's nothing wrong with eating some fried foods, but I'm just curious if you've thought about how to break into the sort of fundraising with a healthy mind or the people, you might even capture a greater audience. Like when I'm thinking of, you know, my, trying to sell things to my parents who wouldn't want snacks.
She does Teacher's Corner, so we, we have it, you know, we put a little thing in there explaining to teachers, like here are some ideas for healthier snacks. Health, parties are coming up.
Yeah, or just like, you know, fundraiser, just things like that. Just like any, any ideas you can have to sort of disperse to the various boosters and classes. It just tends to be a lot when.
What are the classes?
They don't have, that was amazing.
Fan does the oranges, don't we still do the oranges?
No. That's a face. Fan does cookie dough.
Hey, but they do an orange.
Yeah, point set is. But yeah, just like any, any, any more ideas we could have to mix up the fundraisers, they would include.
Help your options.
Who might be more, who might be more ready to fundraise. I know you guys are creative, so.
They do, it's also a lot easier to sell.
I know. It's easy to sell, it's easy to sell, but it, but it also, it also is, you know, there's, you know, there's, there is, there are limited. There's some people who might not choose.
Noted? We'll put our thinking caps on.
Anything, you know, just like any, any creative ideas you see, everybody see.
Anything else?
Anything else, any questions? Thank you very much.
I know the Commit to Be Fit team hosted PATH, the PATH Foundation board just this past month. Twenty-five of them.
And they all showed up too.
They did, and it was a wonderful tour and, um, they did a great job showcasing the ABL. What grade was that kindergarten, right? Kindergarteners and, um, that was just fantastic to see some of the board members on some of the bouncy balls and thank the kids. Um, they really, I think what we realized too, when they saw everything in action with the ABL and the kinesthetic hallway and the, um, the fit kids clinic that's open, they really, really got it.
They could see where their money's going.
But I think that helps because every year these amazing reports, they should know, you know, I think everybody should know, but then when they see it in action. So we've already gotten calls from several other school divisions about some of this stuff after the PATH visit because they've been talking to their network. Um, so that, that's great too. So hopefully it'll have an impact on other schools.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
All right, another exciting update, four point five, Future Educators Academy, Mr. Karen Ellis.
Good evening. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I feel like it's nine o'clock. So my husband gets really mad, he says you get two days to adjust, but it takes me like a long. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight about an exciting opportunity that after tomorrow, we are very, very hopeful. I'll explain more that, um, will be available to our rising juniors, so current sophomores. Will be the first cohort of the Future Educators Academy. So Germana as a lead institution has applied for, um, a college partnership laboratory school grant. And they, we need to have a lead institution, so don't let that, um, bog you down too much because it's Germana. But it's also in partnership with Laurel Ridge, JMU, the University of Mary Washington for now. And I'll explain more in a second, and four surrounding school divisions. So the grant application went in this summer and we worked, um, pretty much almost the better part of a year to get that application ready to go. And it was presented in front of, uh, the Virginia Department of Education in October. And it was very well received. So we just found out that we had the full support of our state superintendent, Dr. Lisa Coons. And it will likely, it will go before the Board of Education tomorrow and we are anticipating that they will vote. And that we will in fact be able to launch our Future Educator, Educators Academy in fall of two thousand twenty-four. So, um, the next slide, the mission, the mission of the Future Educators Academy, sorry, is to produce well-prepared future educators by providing accessible, supportive and innovative learning experiences. So it's kind of like a grow your own program where there will be, to start next year, the first cohort, there will be twenty-four students, six from each of the four divisions. Um, I'll talk more in a second, but that'll be Culpeper, Raccohannock, Orange and Madison. And the, kind of the vision of the FEA or Future Educators Academy is to provide an accelerated, high-quality teacher education program with a pathway to, um, a group of high school juniors and seniors where when they are finished high school, they will have an associate's degree in education and will seamlessly transfer to, right now, we have, uh, University of Mary Washington and JMU onboard, but possibly Shamdowa, George Mason and some other four-year institutions. So it's kind of a two plus two, you'll get your associates while you're getting your high school advanced studies diploma. I'll talk more about the schedule, what that would look like in a second. And then they would automatically transfer to a four-year institution like JMU where they would automatically be accepted into their education, school of education. So, once they graduate high school, within two years, those students could be teaching in a classroom.
Would it be three?
It would be junior, senior year to get your associates along with your high school diploma. And then two years at a four-year university. So two years after graduation, high school graduation.
And the degree would be like.
But they wouldn't need the second year? I mean, third year, I mean, the master's degree?
Bachelor's.
They could pursue that later, but they would get a bachelor's.
Okay.
Which is licenseable to teach.
Yes. Um, next slide. So what that looks like, I've already kind of talked about this. Our secondary partners for this first cohort will be Culpeper, Madison, Orange and Raccohannock. Um, the post-secondary partners right now are Germana, Laurel Ridge and JMU, as well as the University of Mary Washington. We actually have articulation agreements with JMU and UNW right now. Um, with the hope to expand to some other four-year, um, institutions. And then in two thousand twenty-five, we are looking to expand the program with another cohort of twenty-four students. Um, and then you can see some of the neighboring school divisions that would like to be part of that cohort as well. So we would actually have two cohorts going, um, and I'll talk more about locations in a second. So what does that look like? So students who are in eleventh and twelfth grade will complete that associate degree, um, in education while also completing the requirements for an advanced studies diploma. All the courses would be dual enrolled. Then that degree, that associate's degree would transfer to the School of Education at JMU or UNW right now. Like I said, our, our articulation agreements are in place. Students would, um, pursue an education degree, they would earn their bachelor's and, which we know is a critical need, teacher shortages. So this academy is, um, attempting to fulfill that short teacher shortage. Um, and then for right now, our students will go to the Daniel Technology Center to begin next year. So these are current sophomores who are going to apply. And then, so next year they would be juniors, that would be the very first cohort. They would finish their senior year and go on to a four-year institution. And our students, we would transport them to the Daniel's Technology Center. Uh, Monday through Thursday would be classes from eight, um, I think it's seven fifty or eight AM until ten fifty AM. They would return here, which our schedule, um, is, our schedule works really nice with that because they would return in time for lunch and a third and fourth block here at their base school. So our schedule already accommodates this really well. So we do have some things that we put in place for student supports. There will be tutors, um, kind of embedded in some of those courses, especially those courses that tend to be difficult for college students like statistics. Um, but, so there would be some supports put in place to help students who might be struggling academically in some of those courses if needed. All disability services would be provided, um, as outlined in an individualized education plan, an IEP or, uh, which is an IEP or a 504 plan. So we would, um, accommodate those students and their needs. There would be Friday, so classes would be Monday through Thursday. Friday, um, some of the things that could happen might be tutor sessions for students who are struggling. And that tutor session might be at, um, Daniel's Tech Technology Center in the morning or it could be here at the base school. So we would have some different opportunities to help students along who may need it because it's, it's going to be a challenging course load, but doable. Um, we would prepare students and they would take the practice math assessment and the Virginia Communication Literacy Assessment. What we know as the VCL, VCLA. So that is needed to enter an education, school of education program in your junior year in college. They will have already had those out of the way before they go to that four-year institution. So they can automatically be accepted into this, um, school of education. There will be some mentorship opportunities from our four-year partners. There would be, this is really cool, there will be some experiential learning experiences at all the base schools. So on Fridays we would rotate. Um, we don't have that completely hashed out, but what we've kind of envisioned was, would be there's twenty-four students. So maybe six students are in a rotation, they're in a group A and they rotate to Raccohannock for a period of time. And then Culpeper and then Orange and Madison and another groups does the rotation. So we'd always have a rotation of six students from the program. And they could do a variety of things. We've talked about, um, classroom experiences, um, just meeting with administration and understanding things like confidentiality issues and how an IEP meeting is run, what a 504 is. Um, so just some real learning experiences for students. And then of course we would have some campus visits to our four-year partners, which right now is JMU and UNW. So the students' commitment, so let me back up a little bit. The applications are actually due pretty quickly, but they're not lengthy by any means. They are due December first to the school counselor, so Mrs. Pond. She's already put some information out and she's been talking to this, uh, some of the sophomores about their interests. The commitment on the students' part, um, is that students must maintain a three-point-O GPA to transfer courses to the university. So that's why we have a lot of supports in place to help students be successful in the program, so their courses would transfer. And then we're asking students to commit to the sponsored school division, one of the four, for two years upon graduation from the four-year university. Um, to enroll, all dual enrollment criteria is in place. So typically students need a three-point-O GPA to be in good standing and have completed Algebra II. So our sophomores enrolling would have to meet that criteria. But we also have some things in place for students who may not exact, have that three-point-O for whatever reasons. Um, they could take the math and English placement test for that, for their community college and still be accepted to the program. Again, there's six slots and it is on a lottery system. So if we have six students, and that would be great, then if all six meet that criteria, they would be enrolled in the program. Um, if we had more than six, then we would accept everyone who meets the criteria and then they would go into a lottery system. And that is one of the criteria of a laboratory school.
That is not a, that, that's a, once you meet the criteria, it's just a random.
Exactly.
That's what you're talking about, the lottery system.
And any school division.
For all names.
Yeah, you're just good.
Yep.
Exactly. And any school division that does not fill all six slots, those slots go out large for the other school divisions that may need them.
And they're equals, equal, it's interesting, the equal number of slots, you know, it's not, it, that puts us at a greater disadvantage.
You were very excited.
Yes, we were super excited. I thought I was, I was kind of scrapping for at least three and then we came back that, no, we're going to do them. So I did not argue.
That's complaining on my end. For the success of the program like that, having a cohort of students, it's hard when you're just the only one doing this special program. You know, I mean, but it's really good and I think it makes a lot of sense.
I interrupt you too.
No, that's okay, interrupt if you have questions. Um, so this is what the program of study will look like. We, um, the instructional committee that I was part of, we met often and for long periods of time. But we think we have a good program of study for students entering into this lab school. They will do their orientation, which is required in any, um, school for one week, that's a one credit. It mirrors nicely with our school schedule because typically, community colleges do not start until after our start date by at least a week or ten days. So they would, we would already be in session here in the county. They would do that orientation course, um, virtually most likely, or they could be transported to Daniel's Technology Center to complete that. And then they would begin their fall semester in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. You can look at this, um, each semester, what that. You can look at this, each semester, what that maps out to. We purposely put only 13 credits that last semester, because they are seniors and they are high schoolers, and we know what that last semester means to seniors. It's busy, it's a busy time, too. So we purposely made that one lighter, but it's a 15-credit, a 15-credit junior, a year for both semesters. Senior year, there'd be a 16-credit semester, and then a 13-credit semester for your total of 60. All of these classes are dual-enrolled, and they all meet requirements for advanced studies diploma in the state of Virginia. So basically, when students come back here, they could, that's where they could take the classes, not that they like, but that they're passionate about, like their electives, their band, their arts, and things like that. Their academic piece would be accounted for through this program.
Are these classes all with other high school juniors and seniors? They're not, there's not also?
Exactly. This cohort would just be this group of juniors next year, they would then be groups as a senior together, and then there'd be a new cohort that junior year. So that cohort will be tightened, it'll be 24 students from the surrounding counties.
All taking the same courses?
With the same professors, just them, nobody else.
That's great.
Yes.
That's really good.
And I haven't mentioned some of this, but students will be given the opportunity to take the Ys, which is a requirement for a diploma. They will do that here at their base school. They will be CPR and First Aid certified through the program. I've already mentioned the Praxis and the VCLA, that we will, they will be prepared and then pass both of those, so that they will be ready to go into the School of Education as a junior, as soon as they graduate high school. And then they'll earn their associate's of Arts and Sciences degree in education, 60 credits later. It's a lot, but it's definitely doable.
That's a smart teacher move.
Oh, I wish I could have went through training like this.
Yes.
In educator prep.
Some of the experiential learning, I kind of already described that, but one of the things that I brought up, this is Jackie and Kayla, who are up here, is our ADL lab. So students would get a chance to experience and understand how movement can help with retention and, and learning, and why students need that. So all of that, we can train these students, how, you know, how we know that a classroom should look. Not that they don't get that, but we can really fine-tune it. This is what we want our teachers to know and to experience. I think I've pretty much covered the rest of that piece. Oh, and they would do them for VDOE modules, too. I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback. Such as mandated reporter, reporter dyslexia awareness and restraint training. All that is required by VDOE, so those students would go through all those modules. There would be some opportunities for mentorship. We would, so when I say we, the lab school, the partners, they, students would get help with completion of FAFSA if they needed, which we have at support our even place here, but students, if they, if they weren't ready to transfer out immediately, you say, well, what if someone doesn't quite have that 3.0, and so they're not accepted to the School of Education? There is a Plan B component, so JMU offers, for instance, the BIS, the Bachelor of Independent Studies. So students could enter that program and still get to a bachelor's and licensure. So we've kind of got contingent plans for the student that hits the roadblock, and maybe they don't quite have that GPA, how can we still help them? Again, we're doing this because we want to address the teacher shortage. We know there's a severe teacher shortage. As of mid-September, when this was presented to VDOE, there were 4,300 teacher vacancies still in Virginia. And we also want to reduce the barriers for students. Some students don't see college as a viable option because of cost or for whatever reason. And so, we want to, we want students to have these opportunities, and this is one of those programs that will allow that. Some students don't see themselves as a college graduate, and so this will be an avenue for certain students. It's at no cost to the student. This is all funded under the college, lab school grant. So the two-year associate is at no cost to the student, it's all grant-funded. And then when they go to JMU, UNW, they have committed to, in some cases, helping students with scholarship opportunities, or like JMU with the Grow Your Own program, so that it could potentially be at no cost or very minimal cost, even at the four-year institution. So these students can be debt-free or as close to it as we can get them.
And that was one of our big arguments to the state, too. There's all this lab school money you're putting out there, but we have this teacher shortage, let's put the money and investing in our teacher workforce, so we can develop the next generation of educators.
These were just some questions. I think I've answered most of them, but these were questions that, as we did some public parent nights, we had one last night that I attended virtually, these are some questions that have come up. I will say, number two, we were hopeful by February, that was kind of the timetable we were looking at, but VDOE was so impressed with the lab application, the grad application, that they actually said, they gave us very little as far as you need to answer this or clarify this. It was very, they were impressed. So this is actually going to the Board of Education earlier than we anticipated, with applications, again, being due December 1st. And if a student wants an application, a current sophomore that they want to talk to Mrs. Pond, she has the information for them, if they think they might want to be a teacher, we, what happens, number five, if the student decides education's not right for them? The goal of the program is to get at least 80% of the students transferred to a four-year university to become a classroom teacher. And then from there, we hope that this program really recruits and retains teachers, because they will have all that experience early on through their junior and senior years. But there could potentially be a student who says, eh, I'm in this, but after semester, I don't think this is right for me. There is no penalty for a student that decides to withdraw. We have that built into where a student can get back on. But of course, once we start the cohort, our goal is for at least 80% of them to finish it.
Transportation.
We would provide transportation to Daniel's Technology Center. I have asked if that's covered in the grant. I believe it will be, but I haven't 100% got that yes, but I don't see why the grant would not cover that expense for the school.
Is that Germana?
This is at Daniel's Technology Center, which is the Culpeper, Germana, JMU. That's very close. When we get that second cohort in spring of 2025, we've, I've already talked to Germana, they understand, because Laurel Ridge is going to be partnering with us, we, then that second cohort, I would think we could get them in with like the Governor's School.
That's what I was thinking, like, you could just go to Laurel Ridge.
That would be the following year.
That would be the following year.
Okay. Then they can ride that all the way back.
Exactly. But this cohort probably would finish out at Daniel's Tech Center with their cohort, because they have Germana professors that will start with them. But that second cohort in 2025, that's the cohort where we'll have an site at Laurel Ridge, a location at Laurel Ridge.
Right.
So it's very exciting, it, it's a lot, and it happens, well, it happens slow in some regards, and then, and then once it was in, it happened really fast. But I think it's all the planning, and we really thought it out, what if this, what if this, how do we do this? And in the end, that actually really helped us, because it's, since we got the application in, it's moved really fast.
And that's what the steering committee did say, the subcommittee at the VDOE that were reviewing it, they said it was one of the most thorough applications that they've seen, to map out the entire plan of study, all the articulation agreements. And we hit a sweet spot with tapping into already dedicated funding for Grow Your Own, that we knew some of these universities already had. So it's just really adding a couple more slots to their already flourishing program that already has a really strong following, and it just amplifies that with the two plus two. So we're very hopeful that we'll fully fund this investment in education.
Is this the program that Tony was so excited about? Okay.
Yes, yes. Dr. Brad and I had a lot of conversations about this, early on.
Jumping up and down.
Yes. That's the one.
That's where it was born, in one of our region forum meetings, Tony and I talking about this. So then, yeah, we were able to get the presidents of the universities in a call, and they all jumped on it, too. So that's what, what bloomed. So we're very excited. It is up for vote tomorrow, and it is public record. I was going to actually read the recommendation, because that's on there.
From Superintendent, from Dr. Coons?
Yeah, that was really neat. Hold on one second. So the recommendation that's posted from Dr. Coons, "On the basis of the recommendations from the Standing Committee, the Superintendent of Public Instruction recommends that the Board of Education waive first review and approve the Germana Lab School application for a three-year period with annual reviews. The Superintendent further recommends that the Board delegate to the President of the Board and the Superintendent final negotiation of the College Partnership Lab School contract with Germana, including awarding startup funds and up to $6 million in per people funding from the College Partnership Lab School Fund, in accordance with the Board's guidelines and criteria for the award and distribution of lab school startup and per people operating funding grants for approved lab schools." Yeah. We're very excited.
Yeah, we're very excited to be at the finish line, and hoping by tomorrow, we will have crossed that.
Thank you.
So interested sophomores need to see Mrs. Pond, she's been out canvassing a little bit, but, or a lot, but it, the application is with her, and it's pretty, it's not a lengthy process.
Is there anywhere we can get an announcement or a paper?
I'm sure we could, yeah.
I don't see why not.
We put it out on social, and I know that we did an email blast to sophomore parents, but there'll be more information, especially after, when the vote is official tomorrow.
I think you wait until it's approved.
Of course.
And then go from there.
And then we'll do, I'm sure there'll be a press release on the approval, and then we'll send everything out that we can. But we are thrilled to make it to this point. I really can't believe it. It was just one of those side conversations at a meeting that just blew up. So we're very excited.
Great. Good to hear. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. 4.7 is the Comp Plan update. As you know, it's November of an odd year, so Virginia code requires me to give you an update on our comprehensive plan. We do that pretty regularly anyway, and you did see the Continuous School Improvement Plans presented by the principals last month. So this, just really briefly, in short, will go through where we are. Of course, our vision and mission, everybody knows that our vision is to empower every student to reach their full potential. And our mission through educational opportunities is to promote a culture of learning, roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. And of course, we identified our six priorities in the Comprehensive Plan a couple years ago, fully adopted last June. So priority area one, content knowledge. RCPS will provide an environment that enhances student academic growth for all students in the core academic areas to ensure academic achievement gaps are closed, while all students are appropriately challenged and achieving at or above pre-pandemic levels according to 2018-19 data by the end of school year 2024. So that is a pretty ambitious goal. You'll see these little traffic lights, so that's how we were sort of giving a pulse of where we are, goes with Road to Remarkable. Of course, you know we like our themes. So we thought this was a yellow light, so we're approaching, we're not green yet, whereas we're going right along, but definitely not red. We've put in place so many supports for students, interventions, pacing guides, re-benchmarking, lots of pieces there to help us close those achievement gaps, and you saw that in a lot greater detail with the Continuous School Improvement Plans. Focus areas, definitely student achievement and growth data embedded into regular meetings. So now we're always talking about data in all of our meetings, our curriculum meetings, the building leadership teams, faculty meetings, your network meetings, and our cabinet meetings and principal meetings. So data, we're all about that, how are our kids doing? We know all our students by, like what Mr. Seward said earlier, by name and by need. And we do have our little can-do list of students who we, just on the radar for whatever reason. Maybe the data's not showing that, but we're concerned. We just know something's up, and we just need to keep an eye. Vertical articulation discussions between the grade levels and departments, doing a lot more of that. It is very, very isolating in a small school division for content. So you really do need to get your content teachers together to talk and to see what's working and share best practices. So more of that type of professional development. Rewriting pacing guides and benchmark assessments, that was quite an effort. It took all the way through about mid-September to finish, but it is complete. So we're very excited and seeing the results of that immediately. Priority area two, career prep and workplace, yellow light again. Students will align knowledge, skills, and personal interests, coupled with demonstrating productive workplace skills, qualities, and behaviors to prepare them for opportunities in employment, enrollment, and/or enlistment. So the focus areas for our Comp Plan this year, rightsizing certifications to current course offerings through continued partnerships with RAPC, Pedwaters, Laurel Ridge. We were looking at the Universal Studies Certification, and I think it didn't make it in this point of view, but we weren't sure about Laurel Ridge's completion of our trades building. So Trades Academy planning is actually going on within this couple of weeks. I already saw the email trade for that. So preparing students for the three Es through relevance in the academy models and expanding on those. And rebranding our Health Science Academy, expanding Ag, launching the Fine Arts Academy, and exploring a Culinary Arts Academy. So that all fits into a lot of what we're doing with the Healthy Schools Initiative, healthy meals, hiring a culinary expert in our cafeterias to connect the two, and RAPC and their Culinary Academy as well. So connecting all those dots.
What's the rebranding?
So for the Health Science Academy, we had to rebrand a little bit. Remember a few years ago, the CNA did not take off for the Career in Tech credentials? And then there was a lot of shift in interest and turnover in certain certified professionals that we needed to get. So the hard thing is, you don't want to start a student in a program with these expectations that you can't deliver. So we solidified that in a more sustainable model to do some more sports med, and then so they can still do photonomy, EKG, and some other health science programs with certifications through RAPC can offer, plus what our health providers can, can offer. And we also do more of a survey course earlier, so like exploration of the health career paths. So that gives them a lot more knowledge about what, what the career pathway entails. So it's a little bit of a remodeling, it's got a lot more students interested in career pathways in health, but it doesn't, it, before, it was quite a commitment for something we weren't sure we could deliver with the turnover in providers. And that's hard. We don't want to do that, make promises we can't keep. Priority area three, financial planning, yellow light again. So here, we will support the comprehensive planning priorities through leveraging a multitude of resources, facilitating community and organization collaboration, advocacy efforts for equitable funding for small rural schools, and through seeking and writing successful grant applications so that a remarkable education is funded to the maximum extent possible while minimizing the overall impact on county coffers. And that's something we've really tried to do as much as possible. So focus areas for this, dual enrollment expansion, so again, the Universal Studies Certificate is expanding. We did create an agreement with Laurel Ridge. We had a hangup with some courses that previously we could not offer to sophomores, but other programs could. There were certain, so we were looking for the application, and how do we get that, because we have our certified teachers to be able to do that. So we found a, sort of a workaround process to be able to have that equitably distributed here, too, so how we have that ability. Continue to pursue grant funding to support high school academies and specialized programs. There is a lot of funding out there, if you just go look forward and pull it down. So we, we have a culture that now does that. So every department area is always now looking for those incentivized grants. Build instructional and technology capacity, supporting professional development and resources for teachers to integrate and utilize technology tools to enhance instruction. And that's something we saw, we don't want to lose the momentum we did have during COVID, where teachers were sort of forced into that realm of using technologies and collaborative learning tools and all of those pieces. We don't just want to throw those away either, and just build upon that capacity.
Might have a slum then.
I hope.
We might have a few of those, but those ones, I don't know how much connectivity we have out there, so. Ooh, you're going to get me beat up. Priority area four, student community engagement and civic responsibility. Here, we will create an environment to cultivate a successful connection between students, families, and the community in order to produce more responsible, responsive, and life-ready citizens. By graduation, we still set, yellow light. And remember, we're only in the first full year of implementation of our plan, so I didn't expect to see many greens yet. Focus areas, increase coordination between agencies and organizations to enhance volunteer opportunities. Expand the profile of graduate program to include additional volunteer and internship opportunities in the community. Increase parental engagement. It takes a village, emphasize importance of parents in the education. the educational process. We're at a point in time, we talked a lot about this during our cabinet meetings this past month, in preparation for parental engagement month, and just really reiterating the importance that parents play in their children's educational experience. We need parents, we need their support, we need them to understand that they are such a vital part of the process, we can't do it by ourselves. So getting that message out, but not just saying that, this is one thing to say it, but here's how you can help your student, here's what you can do, here's some things that are vitally important to increasing your student's growth, especially in a post-pandemic world. So we really need help engaging the parents around their education. Parent University, we still have that tool, but we have some ideas that are hopefully going to reengage parents in that process. So that's a major focus for this year too.
That family engagement night at elementary school was so big.
Yes, we're doing it again, we are. Yeah, so there's going to be a fall, smaller scale than the spring one, the spring one's our big one, but there is going to be family engagement night, and then there's also a Title I Family Engagement, I think next week, meeting to help with that too. So yes, we'll have more events like that, that was a huge hit. But we need more information to get to our parents too, in this timeframe we're on, where the expectations are being raised on public ed quite a bit, and we're not going to be able to do it without parental support. And then the other piece is the behavioral health side of things too. Parents are coming to us to wanting help and saying, I do not know what to do with this child right now, you know? And that's, that's okay, it's a, it's a tough, tough thing. We do live in a different world, and post-pandemic, there's a lot of stressors on families. So we also want to provide support that way. So we have had some of the care training already that we've put out there for some parents and teachers to attend, and that was a huge hit, they want that to come back. But also doing some different types of coaching for parents and offering supports where they need it. And here's some behavioral health supports that you can use at home that will greatly mitigate those, things like co-regulation, and then being able to talk about emotions at home and what you're experiencing, and then strategies for, for that. So there's a lot to do, but we need everybody, we're all a team. Priority area five, recruitment retention. Recruit and retain a premier workforce dedicated to fostering educational excellence, continuous improvement, and a compassionate environment, making R C P S the institution of choice for students, parents, and employees. So focus areas here, enhancing mentorship program to better support our new hires. We're seeing more and more across the board in Commonwealth and nationwide, new teachers don't make it very long, the turnover rate's pretty quick, yeah. So it's, that's something, that mentorship is a vital piece in making sure that new hires and new teachers feel supported, they know, you know, what, what's coming, and that's another reason that our lab school idea will hopefully give a lot more of that experience ahead of time, so before you enter their profession. I know a lot of the teacher prep programs really don't come close to preparing you for what it like, is actually like in a classroom.
Yeah, the fact that it's in person is really good, a lot of people are trained online on these.
Yes, yes. And your teacher prep program may be a semester, and your, you know, it depends on your mentor too, if you had a good one. Mine, I know when I came through, I went to a good school, but mine was very short, and I didn't really get to do very much. I got to observe some lesson plans and go see some, and then you get just plopped into the classroom, go ahead, here's everything you need, it's like, whoa, wait a minute. So actually having the hands-on support and walking through every single year of your teacher educator program is going to be so important.
It was a different time.
Yeah. It wasn't that long.
Not for you, it was for me.
So yeah, that's something we need to look at. We do want to keep expanding and talking about staff incentives, creating fringe benefits to attract and retain high-quality staff. That's always an issue around, in rural areas and competing with our neighbors. Enhancing professional development offerings and opportunities to ensure PD is responsive to instructional needs and beneficial in building professional capacity. So I know Karen Ellis has done great work coordinating a lot of the professional development to be directly what teachers need in their current climate, and asking feedback, and then also bringing in some of the highest quality professional development that we've seen in a long time. So our teachers are getting the best. Prior, priority area six, we got a green light on this one, school and community general wellness. R C P S will maintain an emphasis on providing services that promote the academic, physical, mental, and emotional well-being of students, staff, and the community at large as measured by overall participation in wellness activities and programs. This is one area that we've had quite a focus for a long time. Expand services of Fit Kids Clinic and Health Connect America Mount Health Services, that is going really strong and running, up and running very well. So the model we, we found seems to be the one that others are very interested in.
Will we be able to expand that?
Yes, we're actually in talks right now with Rabah Home, who is looking at a telehealth, connecting senior citizens to telehealth services and other families, so it is part of our grant that we explore that option. And it looks now that we have the urgent care model that is doable, whereas with a family practice, it really was a hindrance, and there were a lot of barriers. So that's looking like much more of a possibility. So we are in current talks with, with them. Empowering students to actively engage in overall wellness and well-being through additional training and expansion of peer mentorship opportunities. And that, the peer mentorship program expanded to the elementary school. I know this year, so Kayla Roby is running a fantastic program where middle schoolers are mentoring the little ones, and it's been really beneficial for, for those students. And then re-engaging and enhancing staff community engagement in Commit to Be Fit program. So you just heard about all the things that they're doing. So that is our, just a quick update on where we are, and like I said, you've seen the continuous school improvement plans, and then the documents are available at our website too, to see all of the specific objectives, action steps toward each one of those goals. We are very goal-oriented, and we're tracking the progress on those goals and modifying. This is also an opportunity to hear if you feel like we're still on track with those goals, or if there's anything that the team can look at to modify or shift gears. But again, we're still in like year one after we wrote it, so, but as we're going through, if there's things that you see that we can do a little better, or hit a little, or you have questions about, of course, let us know. Continuous school improvement plans are also available on the websites at both R C S and R C H S. That is their improvement plan that they will, they are measuring against, and this is something reported to the state as well. So important documents. Any questions?
We've.
Carry on.
Carry on.
Excellent. Hopefully we'll have some.
Fascinating. It's just hard to imagine how you can keep up with all of it, it's just.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
We have a great team, and everybody's looking at it. All right, that concludes the reports to the superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Headwaters report.
Right, I have a Headwaters report from here. The Harvest Festival was a success, last one, and the, the school programs who represented this year were the Ag Academy, FFA, Farm Table, Culinary Room, the ninth grade class, and the senior class. And there was a great group of students and staff members that came to support in this effort, and there was lots of, lots of money raised and lots of fun had. The after-school enrichment program is going to host an open house on December twelfth, that's a Tuesday, from four to six P M. I think it's before our next board meeting. And the students are going to show their, show off their projects at the elementary school, and we are all invited. The planning for the revamped Reed program, it's underway, and Cecilia Lopiano is helping Headwaters to develop a comprehensive curriculum for younger students. The program is set to launch in January, if it all goes as planned. And educational enrichment grants are still available to teachers at both schools. This year so far, they have awarded funding to purchase reading manipulatives for kindergarten classroom and a physical fitness board for the gymnasium at the elementary school, but these are open to all staff. And spring enrollment for after-school will start up early December, and the clubs will probably have to be determined. That's what I have.
Another busy thing. Non-vista Governor's School did meet on October nineteenth.
We had a meeting.
After we had two. One will count. Anyway, I'm pleased to, to announce that all tuition assistance was fully funded this year, so every kid that needed it got some assistance, got some help. The warranty move, we're out of trailers, were no more trailers and warranted, everything's in the main facility. And we've also put together a, what's it called, O M U or M U O?
M O U.
M O U, whatever it is. So memorandum of understanding, and, and so we don't have to pay any, any fees for that either, so that's a good thing. We reviewed our contingency funding, and we'll, we'll come back to that and make some decisions. And I think that's about it. We were all, we're fully enrolled, we have no empty slots. That's another big point. Moving right along, information on the budget calendar.
Okay, so every year, you look at the draft budget calendar, because guess what? Budget season, everybody's favorite time. So these are the tentative dates, if you approve that this looks pretty good tonight, and you, by a school board vote, we can send that on to the county, and then they add in, you know, just making sure all of those align. So we do have our joint meeting as usual, February thirteenth, work session. We did want to have, I know Mr. Curry and I talked together about this, having the chair, vice chair of each of the boards meet with us, just to sort of go over any potential challenges we see and discuss some of the questions that have come up, and also prepare for budget season in ways that we can get the word out about these priorities, so.
Have a pre-plan.
Yes, so that should happen within the next month or so. But this is the calendar for you to review and approve as an action item.
V S B A Capitol Conference?
Yes.
That's in, that's in February or?
January.
January, maybe.
It's in January, sixth of January.
January, yeah.
January twenty-second to twenty-third, it is a hybrid this time, so you can take a look at that, and if you're interested in attending, just let Amy know.
It is an interesting thing.
Some interesting topics.
And they are trying to get more legislators there as well. So I know we've tried to make an appearance there too, especially last year when we were pushing some legislation. We may have some more this year, so it might be a good thing to go.
It was a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, the old one just didn't work very well.
Made it really far. It still might be there.
All right, we're at number seven, public comment. Anybody wish to make a comment?
I was already up there.
You've done your part, right?
Just for a second. Brittany General Lee, Pinot District, just one thing I was thinking about when you guys were talking about rebranding the Health Science Academy. I was part of the Health and Human Services College when I went to George Mason, and I've noticed that a lot of younger people are really particularly interested in mental health and psychology and juvenile justice and all those great topics that also have a lot of shortages right now to be filled. And so if you're looking at rebranding, you may get some more kids through human services as well, if you would be willing to tag on one more thing, just thinking about that. And also if there are ways we can help with future educators, Leadership Academy, that's really exciting. I want to come back to high school. I want to come back so I can get my degrees paid for, but if there are ways we can help that or generating excitement among the younger kids, freshman it's awful, unless, no, I'd head one.
That's true, right. My niece is doing just that, going straight out of high school to mental health. That's excellent, a degree.
Seeing no one else, moving right along. Can I have a motion to approve the budget calendar?
I move.
Second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any new business? Going once, going twice? Request for future agenda items? Nope. Our next regular scheduled board meeting will be, look it up.
December twelfth.
Oh, okay, December twelfth, thank you.
And back in this room?
I like this spot.
This is fine. Does it work for you?
Yeah, absolutely. It's pretty cozy and comfy, I think. I like seeing the great colors.
The darkness on the hall is not feeling so green.
How much trouble is it to set up?
Not at all. Katie Cooper in the library, she, and another student, actually, were in here with, with us to just kind of imagine it, and the student came up with the idea of how to set it up and everything, so, Lee Cash, it was really great.
Yeah, it looks, it's great.
We have a motion to go into closed session.
Yes, I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purpose. Discuss and consider the appointment of staff for classified positions, coaching positions, resignation of a professional position, and discussion of the superintendent's goals pursuant to Virginia Code section, and I'm sure you all know exactly what this is, two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Did you recite that in your sleep?
Usually Larry has to.
I know it by heart.
It's ridiculous.
I have a second, I have a second.
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye. We are now in closed session, will take ten minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, where are we going to go for this?